The stamp for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
All right, very good. Welcome, everyone. Minutes of the April sixteenth meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and dispersment of funds. We have a motion to approve the financial report.
Some move.
And motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. How long will we be with the alliance with Mr. Foreman?
Only about, yeah, until six twenty.
Yeah.
We got about fifteen, twenty minutes?
Yes.
For the presentation?
Yes, nine to four.
Oh, okay. I was gonna try squeezing in now, but we have a public hearing at six oh five, so if I had a little window there. All righty, Lou, you have anything to report?
What I would comment on is that actually ordinance two thousand twenty-five, the public hearing was already held on the sixteenth for this. So it's subject to adoption tonight.
Okay, do we have to have a public hearing tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay, very good. So let's go ahead and move forward then. If we don't have to do a public hearing, we have a motion to accept ordinance two dash twenty twenty-five presented for adoption, amending the zoning ordinance article eight, nonconforming situation, section six, repair, maintenance, reconstruction, item number three. We have a motion.
So moved.
In a second.
In a second. And Lou, just to make the board remember, this was about the house on West Main, I'm sorry, house on East Main Street, it caught on fire. If we didn't change the, uh...
Because it was nonconforming?
Yeah.
But when they want to build it back the same way, and so this ordinance allows that to happen.
Very good. It would stick out like a sore thumb if we didn't do something like that.
I think it applies to the entire district.
It does. That's correct. All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. A little free library update. Come on down, Elton Alliance. Mr. Kyle Foreman, come on down. Give us the update.
Well, first of all, thank you guys for having me. In case you don't remember, my name is Angelina.
Angelina.
And I don't remember Kyle. So this is just a quick update Alicia wanted me to share with you guys. As you guys already know, Alicia presented the free little library project that Kyle, our Eagle Scout, will be working on. As we have been working with DPW, which, again, quick, they needed Dan helping us out with this. We had Miss Utility come out to identify where we could and could not dig, and we found out that the previously identified location for this little library was a place that we could not dig. But thanks to Kyle for thinking outside the box, he offered to install the library in our building in a pot of cement. And we are here today for feedback from the board on this new idea. We think it's better than digging that way, even though it'll be on the heavier side, you can still move it around even if it's not an ideal place. Kyle, do you have any thoughts you want to add?
Yeah, that's basically the idea. And put something inside of it as well, maybe like flowers around it so it doesn't look like such, you know, an eyesore for just a pot with cement in it.
I think it's a great idea. Dan, how do you feel about that?
It works for us.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot more sense.
Can you make it heavy enough that nobody can pick it up and carry it away?
I don't think I would, I'm just gonna try to take something that heavy, so.
I hope not.
I hope not either.
Very good. Well, I'm looking forward to it. Where are you gonna put the same place that you were gonna dig?
Yes.
Sounds wonderful.
All right. Any additional comments?
I've got some books at my shop. If you guys want to come over and see what I've got, you're welcome. Anything, a lot of kids' books that I can give to you.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
So Kyle, what grade are you in now?
Eleven.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Well, thank you so much for coming. It was easy and painless.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Great idea.
Good job.
Lou, we could probably fly by. Before we do the presentation, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Do you have anything?
I just took the word a notice that we received a hundred ninety-eight grand from, for the settlement on P-Pass. I'm sure, did you, I assume you will pull that email, I say you. That was the first initial payment from three M for our P-Pass. And pursuant to that, that amount of money, we're getting, we're gonna restrict that and use that for engineering work on the well number three, because we have to upgrade that well to remove any P-Pass residual in that well. So that's about a hundred ninety-eight thousand go into that, engineering design for that project.
Real quick comment. I was talking to an attorney in Delaware over the weekend, and I guess there's, it's coming out that it's, some of these P-Passes has been culled by the fire foam, right? And, but you can't really, the tracking that they're doing with the, they can actually track these plumes today. And the one that was coming from, I would say Cherry Hill, down toward Elton, they, he told me that with the research they did, it actually split, split right around Mount Albion, didn't affect their, it went right around Mount Albion. Now, how is that possible? That's what I'm saying. That's what he told me. He said, "The plume was like this, and then it gets to the school, and it went like this."
He understood God's will.
It was. Then it went sans her butts. Real quickly, we have, we had a request. Tim Eller from the Elton Little League reached out to me, and Chief, I'm gonna ask you to maybe reach out to him and give us a recommendation. They didn't have the Little League parade, so they still want to have the ceremony to honor some of the folks from the Elton Little League. And on June seventh, they're, they were asking to shut down Howard and Bowe just for a short window from eleven to twelve thirty on June seventh. But I told him I'd bring it up, and maybe we can get a recommendation from you and let us know if it can work or not.
Absolutely.
All right. That's all I had. Gene, you have anything?
I was curious about the...
I'm sorry. Look, before you get to Gene, if you don't mind, Lois had another something on his chart, but maybe he didn't see it. And this afternoon, all of us, and it was directed to Lois specifically, and we were CC, and it was from Wes Zimmerman. Zimmerman was the principal formerly at Elton High School. He works for the Board of Education, and he brings up a very pertinent point about the traffic on Stockton Street, and it reads as follows, if you don't mind. "Sorry to bother you with the town concerned, but I am afraid the line of sight exiting Stockton Street onto North Street is going to cause an accident at some point. The cars parked along North Street, as Stockton Street causes a line of sight issues, and drivers cannot see the oncoming traffic going off on North Street. With the CCPS, credit union, and community center all using that intersection, I wanted to bring this to your attention." And also, if you look on your phone, he has a site as he pulling out of Stockton, how far he had to come out in the road and what you can see and cannot see. There is a problem there, even before he presented to us, but it was never addressed or looked at. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? Because obviously, at one time or the other, he had to go out there.
Yeah, question given. You know, I, I travel that road two to four times a day on my way to and from work, and I agree, it is a big problem. I almost got in a serious accident a few weeks ago, somebody coming out of there. I don't know how they didn't see me coming off the bridge, but they didn't. And when I'm on my way to the bridge, that's the most dangerous, because they cannot see. They have to come way out, because there's usually a car parked there. Yeah, it's a bad intersection, and we talked about this before.
Right.
The challenging part is that the folks that live on North Street right there, that's our only parking in it. Yep.
Not necessarily so. The, I believe the yellow line could be put there, and they could be moved back one. And I don't think we need to work, and I understand your point. We need to address it in the sense that we'd rather not see an injury or an accident there. If that person or that driver can move back, because, you know, nobody has a personal spot on the street to park.
Lou, can you take a look at that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I saw your email back, and Lou recommended for everyone to use, go through the school, school board's property when they exit. And that's, that could be a challenge too, at times.
I guess. We were looking at creating that street there.
We were.
That went nowhere. Do you think anything might change, that we should revisit it, or you think it's a...
We could not acquire the property. I don't think that was the issue, that intersection.
The extent, yeah, the extension of...
I don't know. It's something John was, that John was working on, and I'm not sure how far he actually got on that.
There was, uh, the lady that owned the last parcel.
Thank you.
Did not want to sell it, and if you remember, they did, they offered to sell it, but it was like, like five million dollars for...
It was a very large sum.
It was a crazy number, just for one little connection, and there's no other additional way to go through there. Dave will get you involved in this one.
Yeah, if you, I'm not familiar with what John did previously, or any of that with that.
I think he was researching the land that was there, and the owners, but then it just stopped.
Okay. So what we wanted to do is to extend where the, where the E-Town barber shop is?
Sure, just go through.
Go through and right to the building, and the very last parcel, there was a little strip of land that the owner was saying that they did not want to sell.
Her name was Emily.
Is that an improved lot, that last strip of land?
No.
It's not an improved one now.
Yeah.
Had a house on it, but it's gone.
Okay. Okay, I'd be happy to take a look at that and see what...
We'll get you as much information as we can. Can, Lou, can you get...
It'd be nice to know what options we may or may not have.
Next time a house was there, it was back in the sixties, so you know how long gone that house and the houses that existed on that particular street were there. So it's a long time.
Very good. Anything else? Gene, did you have anything else?
Yeah, there was a survey that came back for speed homes. I think we have it here, but the prints are small and have a little hard time reading it. For Aaron Court and Ben Boulevard. But what I noticed is you need sixty percent of the residents to respond in a positive way before it could be considered. But there's one person on here that has about thirteen votes, and it's the same person.
So they're gonna do thirteen properties.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Somehow the other, I think it went to the person who owned it, and he shared his belief, but it did not go to all the tenants, and it should have gone to each one of those.
Yeah, and if the tenant agreed, then that's fine, but I still don't think that ten or thirteen votes should be equated in that calculation.
Well, how did you calculate it to come out?
I didn't yet. I just thought, it caught my eye, and I didn't know if he would agree with my interpretation or not.
I think you could kind of wash that vote, or give him a...
One vote.
One vote, or if you did it in some type of percentage, I guess.
That's what they need, a percentage.
It was orchestrated by the lady who manages that. For some reason, he wanted all of those votes, and somehow the other day it went to him, and they should have not, sort of gone actually to the people who drive there.
All right. Well, there is a lot in favor, that's for sure, but he offset the percentage, is what, is what my point is.
Well, let's take another look at that.
Okay.
We'll get the percentage.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The only other thing, Dan, last, in April seventh meeting, I think you told us you were gonna give us a more comprehensive inventory list. I was wondering if that's gonna be done soon.
Yes, I want it soon.
Thank you. That's all.
Carol?
Scholarship lift was sent to Elton High School. They were a little behind. They have their graduate awards assembly two weeks from tonight, so by that time, they should get back to us and let us know who the candidates will be. So a check can be written, and appreciation of it coming from our office or from our staff.
Perfect.
And the June team celebration, which occurs over to the career center, correct center, rather, is on June the nineteenth, ten o'clock to four. We gave them a donation. Would it be possible for us to do the same thing again?
How's the board feel? I think we budgeted for it.
Good.
All right. What was the donation amount? Was it a thousand dollars?
I think it was somewhere around two. I'm not sure. I'm just going on recall.
All right. Well, if you bring us that number, we'll look it up, and we'll vote on it next week.
Okay.
Can I add something?
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna talk about the fishing rodeo. I just want to congratulate you on a job well done.
Well, thanks.
It was phenomenal, and wanted to thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Of course, it was a group effort.
What do you do?
Thank you.
And the sense of the Mayo celebration that they had on last Friday, I believe, went very well. Congratulations to the Alliance. And Rob Matsumiano, congratulations to you again for an effort. Well done. I'm done, sir.
Very good. Carol?
I was hoping Gene would forget, so I'd be the only one to say it, but anyway, I wanted to congratulate Rob Matsumiano for the rodeo, fishing rodeo. I actually can say I learned something from this this year, because I've never touched a fish. At age thirteen, when I got stuck with the gills, I never touched a fish unless somebody cooked them, and that's the only time I eat them. But anyway, I actually got a chance to learn how to bait the hook and cast the iron, so after working with my grandson, I taught him how to do something I didn't know. So thanks again, Rob, and you had a great job.
You're welcome. All the eight heroes learned it.
But, that's all.
All right. Rob?
I just had the fishing rodeo to talk about, and I'll tell you, this, I really believe this was the best one yet. It was the fifth annual. We had similar turnout to last year, right around two hundred. The weather was perfect, and I think I saw more fish caught this year than in any previous year. The kids had a ball. We introduced Regis Water Ice this year. I had a sponsor for that, and the kids ate all day. One of the popular additions was from a suggestion Mayor Alp gave me last year about including a fish cleaning station. Why not teach the kids that final stage, you know, and it turned out to be very popular. A lot of the kids brought their fish up. Mr. Jerry Swika from Chesapeake City, he cleaned the fish. The kids took their filets home and had dinner that night with what they had caught that day. Great event, and I really want to give a lot of credit to everybody involved. This is truly a group effort, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
And listen, I truly, we want to thank you, because it wouldn't have been done if it wasn't for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, or?
No.
All right. I'd like to invite the Singerly Fire Company to come up and make a presentation to us. Pull up another chair or two, if you'd like. So a couple of weeks ago, I met with the same members at the Singerly, and we went over some items that they're gonna present to the board here tonight, and I think it was very, very important for us all to be on the same page here, especially before we set the tax rate.
So as Sam's handing out some handouts for everyone, just a couple introductions. Sam Goldberg's making his way around. Maybe you know him. He's a member of our long-term strategic planning committee, as well as our community and general relations committee. My left here is Chief Fred Hill, coming back as chief again this year. And then, of course, myself, Robert Muller, serve on the board of directors, as well as the strategic planning committee and the government relations committee.
So we've been doing this, we've been meeting with you guys since the 2016 with the general conversation about the long-term viability of the fire department. And we give several relatively long presentations, of which you have in your packet there. So we're not gonna show you all fifty-four slides over again.
Geez, Sam, could you get these printed out a little smaller?
That was the only way to get it on one page. And that's, and that's really, all the documents I just gave you are really for research purposes, if you will. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go through those documents.
Before I let Rob and Sam do, again, Fred Hill, Chief of Singerly, on behalf of my team and Board of Directors, I want to thank Commissioners and yourself, Mr. Mayor, for your time on this matter.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred. You want to pull up a chair with them?
Okay. Let them, let them do that then.
All right. So as a quick recap, we do have some new folks joining us from the town administration side. So we wanted to give a little overview of our services that we provide. As a volunteer fire company, we started out in eighteen ninety-two, eventually leading to adding EMS service and growing to who we are today, with three fire stations. And we run a myriad of missions. The first is fire protection, and serving the community responding to alarms. EMS service, not the ambulance service, with five ambulances now. And we also spend a lot of time doing other community activities, which include our outreach programs to all the public schools there in our district. I believe we're up to eight at the moment, reaching around forty-two hundred students a year. We also do private schools, religious schools, daycares, Boy Scout troops, Girl Scout troops, and the like.
Seniors.
Seniors, open houses, our outreach events. You've seen our Trump Retreat that we have every Halloween that keeps growing and growing. I think we probably had close to a thousand kids that passed here. So there are a lot of ways that we engage with our community as community members. It's our job to be here to support in their time need, but even ahead of time, and do some education. We also do a lot of work in trying to prepare and ensure that we're ready for emergencies, which goes to our insurance rating. As a fire department, we participate with insurance services organization, which rates our ability to provide that protection, and that formulates into your insurance rates with residential and commercial. One of the things that we are proud of, and Sam helped spearhead some of that work, we were able to actually improve our service rating five years ago, when we went from a six eight down to a three three Y, which is huge. It's unheard of. Very few departments achieve that level. We're in the top ten percent of the nation when it comes to fire protection. So we're really proud that we're able to meet that level, and for the insurers of our community, it lowered their rates as much as they could be by being able to offer that level of service. So as Sam mentioned, we've been talking and having a conversation for a while. We found it very productive and engaging working with the town and all the stakeholders, and talking about how do we continue to provide and maintain our service, and how do we look to improve and grow in the future. So we look back to spring twenty twenty-three, which is actually two years from now. We were in active discussion with, with the board about improving the funding that we receive each year. And at the time, the discussion centered on the increased call volume, staffing that we need to provide to maintain our level of service and actually grow to meet the needs of the community. At that time, we had presented to the board about changing the town charter, adjust the funding formula from the current three cents to twelve cents. That twelve cents would get us the funding level that we need to not only sustain our current operation, but increase our staffing ability to respond to the emergencies and the changes we've seen in the past few years to meet that need. And at that time, we were working on the charter change, and then unfortunately, time is everything, right? You guys, as the board, had a couple of large items fall on your lap, and we appreciate the magnitude of that situation, and we respect that you had to take a pause and look at, how does everything lay out, right? How do we responsibly, these are a team, between the tripling of the trash bill that fell on your lap, looking at and taking care of the town employees with raises and collective bargaining, all of those things that were going on at the time. So we appreciate the difficulty of that. But that kind of fast forwards us to looking at, you know, where, where are we now? So over the past twenty years, our funding from the town remained between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year based on assessments, and we hadn't really seen a lot of growth, as we've seen our calls and demands for service grow. So obviously, trying to keep pace. We've been able to do some other things that kind of led us along over the years.
Rob, I'm gonna interrupt you. Should we be up to date with a number there? Maybe share, go. There we go. See, we got some rationale, and we keep... Not that it matters. We're, we're paying attention, but if...
Everything that we're, everything that we're gonna tell you this evening is in your packet.
Yeah.
All right. So as I mentioned, the town funding itself was kind of a main level, if you will, over the time period. And as we look at our calls for service as they increased over time, our response now, fifty-four, fifty-four percent of our calls for service fall within the town limits of the the other forty-six being outside the town of Elkhorn, but within Cecil County. That's excluding any utility we provide over development.
And that, that converts into a four thousand calls a year into town limits of Elkhorn.
Have you guys, I'm sorry to cut you off, sure, but you weren't done.
I'm good.
Have you guys made any headway? Have you looked into, have there been any changes in the amount of calls that you make to retirement homes?
Those calls have increased over time, but frankly, in the grand scheme of things, if those calls went away, we would still need the same level of service anyway. So you're working within a band, right? So right now, we're at five ambulances, and those, they do put extra labor onto us, but that labor has to be ready and available anyway. So if we get away with those calls altogether, this conversation would change a bit.
So volume wise, as we look at the nursing homes, their volume level has remained proportionally level. And they do have the same number of calls probably the last five, six years that they've always had. Their numbers have been increased, but they're still there.
We have other places, not only the nursing homes, but the corridor out of two seventy-nine is a hotspot. People coming off the interstate, they have a heart attack, and, you know, a lot of happy dinner. So there, we have a certain number of regular customers, if you will. But again, when you're talking about four thousand calls in the town, if we were able to cut two hundred of those off, it really would have changed the picture.
Understood.
So as we're looking at twenty twenty-three, the strategic planning side, we were looking at planning on phasing in an additionally fully-staffed ambulance in twenty twenty-four, which means hiring eight additional personnel. And then again, in twenty twenty-six, another eight. That would put us on track to meet projected call volume and the demands for service. We were also looking at the EMS calls based on projections. We were looking to have around six thousand calls for service in twenty twenty-five. Now, projections, sometimes they're projections. We actually hit sixty-eight hundred last year, so the projection, we're running a little ahead on.
That's just ambulance calls.
Yeah, that's just the ambulance calls. Another thing that we had on our radar was looking at renovations for our station out on Route Forty. Strategically, we know with Southfield's going in, some of the other developments and buildings that we're working at, we need to move some of our career personnel out to that station and staff it twenty-four seven. The downside is when it was built, that wasn't on the radar, so we don't have twenty-four seven facilities. We don't have bunk burns. We don't have a stove out there to support twenty-four seven operations. So the plan is to look to pursue that renovation by twenty twenty-six. So the plan was to look to pursue that renovation by twenty twenty-six to be able to to fit that need and be ready to pick up the Southfield's call volume, as well as reduce response times for that side of town. So here we are today, so that was twenty twenty-three. So here in twenty twenty-five, there are some things that have adjusted. One of the things that has happened is we projected around twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, we would start to be operating at a a net loss each year, revenue versus expenses. We actually started that in FY twenty-four, so the year after we were working together, um and that continues to this year. Some of the things we've done to try to manage cash flow, um there has been no reduction in service, but we have delayed implementing those additional staffings and and ambulances that we talked about. We hired four of the eight positions that we had planned in twenty twenty-four to try to phase in while we were looking and working to establish a funding stream with the town. So we hired half the people that we needed, which means we can only staff one ambulance half the time instead of twenty-four seven. The other ambulance or additional eight personnel that we looked at hired, this coming this way year, it's to be determined, it's on hold, but we still have those four positions behind the building. So one of the side pieces to that is since we've not hired them, uh last, the year before last, in twenty twenty-three, we responded and got out and staffed our units with a paramedic unit all the twelve percent of the time. Twelve percent of the time, we responded understaffed calls. Look that around a year later, twenty-five percent of the time, we're responding understaffed because we haven't been able to hire those additional paramedics to staff out the ambulants.
So what does that mean then?
So that, so instead of getting a paramedic, you're gonna get an EMT, uh which in in an advanced condition, that person wouldn't be able to do a lot of things, provide medications and sort of uh to the to the patient. Another part of that, twenty-five to twenty-seven percent where we're we're grading down, if you will, is those situations where we have five or six calls at the same time, and uh so that would also contribute uh to that. So our as our call volume is increasing, simultaneously, our staffing is is going the other direction because of funding, and uh so unfortunately, the public gets stuck in the middle of that.
So we rely more heavily on mutual aid and other county resources to draw in, which also means a a delay in care, they're not getting care as fast because those resources are coming from somewhere else.
You know, I I did have an experience where I saw a paramedic had come from Hartford County, and then another time, someone had to be called in after the fact, um I guess to assess the situation, so to speak. They weren't there on the original call, so.
We rely on Newcastle County, all the fire departments in Cecil County, and sometimes Chester County and on Harper County, depending on what's going on, um which is which is the downside to the thing that you guys really love is growth, uh but it has a tremendous impact on us.
And we, I mentioned the planning renovation for Station Three, now that's been deferred, and we're gonna launch a fundraising campaign near later this fall to start to try to raise funds to be able to do that project, but obviously, we're we're gonna be off the mark in trying to get that launched in twenty twenty-six.
What's the status of the station up in Perryville? What station is that?
Station fourteen.
Fourteen, how is that, is that good to go?
It's unstaffed, and uh we did just put an additional in because we we physically couldn't put an ambulance in there. But we and we will have the capability of putting staff up there uh going forward, especially when we have peak times like, you know, County Fair, uh Scotch Games, those kinds of things, uh to be able to.
All right, thank you.
If we happen.
So as as we look at where we are operationally and functionally, we we're at a crossroads of twenty-three. Now we're in what we would deem as an emergency state. We need to identify that additional funding stream and what is that gonna look like from the town to the fire department, um so that we can plan to meet the needs of the community. Uh as of next year, we should have four fully-staffed ambulances, and right now, we have two and a half. So when we look at the the priority, you know, we're here, and obviously, we're behind now in providing the service level that we expect to be able to perform, and we've already talked about the call volume is higher than what we had expected it to be when we formulated our original projections. We're eight hundred calls, more than where we thought we would be this time.
If we put that in perspective, eight hundred calls, has pointed out two ambulances. They ran eighty-five calls last year. We have five ambulances running over six thousand calls.
Uh now, we have implemented some programs over the past two years that have helped slow some of the process. Uh we have actually Chief Hill pioneered a with his team, a live-in program. So we have some individuals that have come to live in the station, uh that helped our fire response. So if they're filling a fire response, then that ensures that we have an extra person for our ambulance. Uh we also have a ride-along program that they've instituted as well. We've seen people come from other jurisdictions to come and ride as well. Um we've also been partnering with some EMT classes at Cecil College, we've got some new EMTs. Now, that kind of helped us a little bit with response, but again, that twelve to twenty-five percent where we're understaffed, we doubled in a year, and that just amplifies the need that we need to get those other positions filled that we had projected to have. So really, where we are now is we need to see if we can adjust that that funding level. Um I know, uh our original proposal, discussion was about, uh the first initial year, we would need one point two million dollars, um which that twelve cents, going from three to twelve cents, would add about a million dollars to the current one hundred and sixty thousand if we put us just about that one point two. But moving forward, one of the reasons why, you know, the discussion had focused on the assessment, assessed value number, is as assessments rise, we would accumulate more funding to be able to pay towards the the additional service, uh which is one of the things that we did see with county assessed values. During the same time period, they went from roughly half a million dollars, uh to this year is one one point two million dollars.
From the county?
Yeah, so 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 their so their funding stream based on their formula and assessments has kept pace with.
Now, is that for the county or is that for the part of Elkton that's not in town limits?
That's the county itself.
Everything that's not?
We cover eighty-nine square miles.
Okay.
Um so outside of the town of Elkton, the rest of those eighty-nine square miles is just where it covers.
Which represents some forty percent of our calls would be covered under the county's umbrella as opposed to the town government's umbrella.
Yeah, uh to simplify numbers, you know, for one point two million dollars, we respond to forty-six percent, forty-six percent of our calls are in the county versus fifty-four percent in town.
All right, now, have you different differentiated between Elkton and in-town limits also? That's already been calculated in.
We're talking, we we're talking about town limits.
Yes.
When we talk about the number of calls or the dollars or whatever.
Of where you're at.
We're referring to the bigger town limits.
Uh now, one of the things, uh as part of our job on the Strategic Planning Committee, is we've looked at all the projections, all the financials, all the national standards, it's where we cut, where we derive that when do we need to hire more people, how many calls, ten one ambulances have, and all of all of those issues. And that's where these numbers come from, looking at twenty twenty-four adding crew, twenty twenty-six adding another staff and crew. So that's where those numbers come from.
Robert, one of the things you haven't mentioned yet is the fact that Southfield, even though it has a residential and commercial development, it's kind of a sportsplex, it's already been bonded for a sportsplex, which uh the town anticipates many, many thousands of people, and out of that statistically, that could put a demand on the ambulance service or probably ambulance more than anything.
Well, any sporting event is gonna it's going to drive additional ambulance calls over time.
That's what I was saying. And we've seen that in in Perryville, the Great Wolf Lodge, they've they've absorbed an additional one hundred and fifty calls for service just in Great Wolf Lodge. So we know our call volume is gonna go up by a couple of hundred once Southfield's gets built out and we start seeing those patrons as well as the residents there, we know we're gonna come to that. And that's why the Station Three renovation fell there did, to get our Route Forty station online twenty-four seven with dedicated staffing.
We were we were actually offered a plan, I think actually through the mayor, uh for Southfield's, for a fire station. We don't need a fire station there. We're close enough with Station Three on Route Forty uh to cover all of Southfield's, we just need to be able to staff it and house it.
How many, what's your equipment at Station Three? Just an engine or?
An engine, a traffic unit, uh a tanker, and an ambulance.
Okay.
Animals, not where you're staffed, so those vehicles are strictly volunteer-driven.
Which all your staffing's at thirteen at this point.
It is all at thirteen at this point because we don't have the facilities for for the people that are uh working to be at Station Three, for fourteen, but not that. So yeah, that that is the limiting factor, and in fact, when we look at, and the county did a really good job of of mapping all the calls in the county, and you can see on the map, uh which is in your packet, um a dot map showing every call.
Based on national standards, there's a a range of five, ten mile distance where response sites.
So Station Three is actually, would if it was staffed, would be a busier station than thirteen based on the calls, where they're located, we're just not staffing that station because we mechanically can't do it.
Can people stay there at three? Does it have?
There's no, it's a garage.
That's it.
It's a very pretty garage.
And that's why the the capital project of the renovation for the station was in our strategic plan, so that we could put people there twenty-four seven.
Yes.
So on the, uh help us understand the revenue side a little bit, the uh collecting from the insurance companies. Give us kind of, you mentioned it to me.
We have several different revenue streams, one of which is worth about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars we get from town. Uh we get about uh one point two million from the county. Uh we have a six million dollar budget, so you can do the math of those two numbers. So uh the revenue that we get as a percentage of our revenue from donations is becoming insignificant to our budget, whereas at one time, that number was the driving force of our budget, and in fact, when the fire station moved from uh Main and North Street up to uh the previous station, right next door, nineteen forty-nine, um it was fully funded by donations.
So as we look, as Sam said, we divvied up the pie, you know, the town's about a hundred and sixty thousand, fund drives about another hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the county's one point two million, the ambulance billing recruitment is somewhere around two point two billion. Um and then all other fundraising that we do kind of gets lumped, grants that we apply for and things like that, uh can be around five hundred thousand depending on, you know, the awards that year. So as we as we look at the percentages, the largest percentages, uh the insurance billing for the ambulance and the county appropriations.
And that doesn't come, the what we build for the ambulance service, unlike other districts.
That, this is a point I was asking for.
So like the example I gave, uh the mayor was College Park, uh about the same size as Elkton. They, when they do their billing, they receive about eighty percent of what they build.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty percent, for whatever reason, they don't they don't get paid. Where they're reimbursed, we only get paid about twenty percent of what we build, and the rest, uh we don't get paid. A lot of that has to do with socioeconomic of our of our area, uh people, they don't have insurance.
Say, you're not billing people that that have no insurance, right?
We bill everybody.
Even if they have no insurance?
We bill everybody, but we don't send anybody.
We got someone.
I know that, I know that, I know, you know.
So eighty eighty percent of the time, we send them a bill and we never hear from them again.
So and and.
So you're saying only twenty percent of your uh patients have insurance?
Or, so say they're on Medicare.
Medicare covers it?
We send we send them a bill for a hundred dollars and they give us twenty.
They give you eighty, okay, they have allowable, I know that.
Well, in the same, did change the legislation, so we get a flat rate of a hundred and fifty dollars.
From Medicare, okay, what about Medicaid?
Now, the the payer ratio is what you're talking about. So our payer mix has changed over the years. Uh our commercial payer group is shrinking, and our self-payer, non-insured, is increasing, uh as well as our Medicare/Medicaid payer group is also increasing. Uh so when we talk about those locked-in fees of a hundred and fifty dollars, well, if it costs us twelve hundred dollars to treat and transport the patient, we're getting a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
So our recruitment, based on what we bill out versus what we get, is roughly forty-seven percent. The rest, the other fifty-three percent, once we pursued it to its eventual end, then we write it off. Now.
How do you do when you, I I don't wanna get into too much particulars, but what do you do when you take a patient in that is on state insurance, and they don't have their card on them or whatever?
So.
So how do you capture their Medicaid?
We have relation, our billing company has relationships with Christianic Care, so they pull all of that information straight from Christianic Care system.
So if they don't get it, that information, you're not getting it?
They're not gonna work on anybody that hasn't given their name.
Yeah, that.
Oh, they'll give them their name, I guess, true.
The hospital usually exhausts all efforts when it comes, that's so they're they're a pretty, they're a pretty good proponent in making sure we haven't.
They're covered as best they can, and you're, you're getting their name.
We're we're really patient care.
So so that really helps us out, having that connection. They do the work and we benefit.
Okay, that's good.
Yep, so we we, the billing side, we've done, gotten about as efficient as we can get with the process, um and. We're up to the, since the car accident.
We get you get the information from state police or EPD, and we send that person a bill. If they don't pay it, then that's just way, yeah, we just write it off. The uh and and in a lot of cases, depends on how fast we get the bills on, and of course, uh that's, sounds good when you say it that, but your your car insurance has a finite number. Well, if the tow truck guy takes all that number, then there's nothing left to give us.
So you had a chart, and I think it's here in front of me, in front of the board, one we have a tough time seeing.
Yes, so that chart, um so there there are two charts that we had presented previously. Uh one is without the the charter amendment change, without the the extra ones. Um that has us pulling from um operating in a a net loss for the next five years until we have no money.
And of course, services will go down continuously over that time period. If it go a hundred percent, and then on someday we go upward, we're out, it's it's gonna it's gonna lean down.
Well, I think that was the important part, I think, that I wanted you to to tell the board about. I mean, if we, if you start liquidating all your cash reserves, similar to what we've done over the years, we we liquidate our rainy day funds, we put some in. we, we liquidate our rainy day funds, we put some in, then we gain some back. But once you exhaust it completely, you guys are in, you're only collecting X amount of revenue. We're fortunate from our standpoint, we're collecting, we collect most of our revenue.
We have, we have a budgeted loss this year of $800,000. We lost about $800,000 last year. So it won't take very long to run out of money when you're operating at a negative $800,000 a year. That number's going to increase going forward.
So, so that's why we provided that to you, so you kind of see where that goes. Now, you know, if we look, if you're, if we're able to successfully get to where we need or asking the town to be, we are still, it takes us about seven years to fully stabilize our situation, but we're not exercising, including 100% of our, our cash assets.
So the, one of the questions I asked that evening when we were in there, that by firing in, let's say the, the increase, for example, and it was to bring you an additional $1 million per year into your fund, you felt as though that that would be, that amount at a steady pace would take you through 2040?
2047.
2047.
But that had a great deal. That doesn't give us any rainy day fund.
Yeah.
We get no recovery.
But we know that that provides a constant point of support so we can make other adjustments. You know, looking at our ass purchases, you know, where are ways that we can fund it differently, to make those decisions to keep, to create additional buffer.
And when you, when the Singlerly Fire Company purchases capital equipment today, you don't lease or you, you pay it out. So Donnie writes a check for that, is that correct?
So one of the things, historically, we did that. However, the past few years.
Right forward, we can't do that.
Purchase, purchase of our rescue and the latest engine, we took advantage of the Maryland State Fire Department Association, MDEM, who offer one interest, 1% interest revolving fund. So we could get a loan through them for 1% interest. They have changed the rules somewhat with that program. But we did take advantage of that and made payments to help our financial situation once we got on the radar and started talking to you guys in 2020 through 23. You know, we knew we needed to do something to improve cash flow.
Yeah, and simultaneously, when we first started this conversation, you know, the call, we talked about the ladder truck they needed to replace, built in 1995. We had to literally make parts for it to repair it. And to replace it, when we first started to have this conversation, was about a little over a million dollars. It's over $3 million today to replace.
Yeah, you know, listen, in, in 2016 or 17, when you were coming in here and you were speaking about the chart, and then you look at the chart and the chart's pretty much spot on to where you projected.
We guessed, we guessed pretty good.
You did, I know.
How did you guys make out with the ARCA fund? I mean, that pushed you a little bit.
So the, actually the town, you guys gave us about an extra $1 million, which took us from where we originally projected and moved us over a year. You've bought us an extra year.
So we would have had this conversation last year had it not been for the ARCA money.
Very good. Any additional comments? I think we know where we're at.
So the, so the ask is, we, we need to change the charter to 12 cents and 3 cents of 12 cents. And we, and then I'm assuming that would be a 2026 thing. So we're still going to be revenue between now and whenever that kicks in. And then also, Chief, there's, there's two funds that are in arrears now. Is that from the county?
508.
508 funds. They came through the county. We haven't received from the town. So there's two years with the funds we haven't received.
From us?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll take a look at that. Tyler, write down the 508. I thought we just, I thought we just paid that.
Thought I saw the check, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I did too. Plus we proved it.
Yeah.
And then it wasn't issued.
That's very possible.
Tyler, do you have any questions for them or?
I mean, that number's insignificant for the conversation.
Yes, yes, yes. So Tyler is our finance director with the town of Elton now. I actually, the information you sent to me, I passed over to Tyler and he actually took a look at it. And some of the things that you just mentioned about the 1% loans and, they did a lot of work. He, he was from the town of Smyrna. They, they supported the, their fire department, right? And a couple of the things that he mentioned to me is like when they bought the ladder truck, the municipality, it was financed and the municipality paid that instead of the fire coming out like the.
How much was 1949? That's how it was going in Elton.
I know it was. So in, you know, our charter is very clear that this is one of the things we have to support. I mean, it's safety of our community and, doesn't use the word ambulance though. Now, I just want to make that very clear. Now, it says fire, it's a ambulance.
Yeah, but the, but the job of the board is to protect the public.
You did, you're 100% right. You're 100%.
Otherwise, you wouldn't have you.
If there's anything else that you need from us or you need from us, just please give.
I, I think we, we have a, listen, it's, it's not going to be an easy decision for us, but I think there's decisions that we have to make to, to support our community. And I, I don't think the, no ifs, ands, or buts, this board supports the Singlerly Fire Company. It's how many, the whipping, you know, the, the whipping that we could get out there, but they have to understand. They have to understand.
Well, we're, we're, yeah, we're to the point where we can't take the can down the road anymore. We collectively. And so the other thing is, we've, we've been, it's transparent. We've been 100% transparent. We've given you all the data. The finances were, were third party independently audited every year. So, and, and we're incredibly frugal with the public's money to a fault in some cases. So you're getting, you're getting a great deal for the amount of money we're asking. $6 million budget for 1.2 million, that's pretty good. If you took our budget and divided it by the, the number of calls, you'd deal with $3 million that we're asking for. And if we went away, the next day, you'd have to come up with $6 million, you know, to have your own fire department. It would, I suspect that if you put in the buildings and the fire apparatus and the people and all that, if you had an Elton fire department, it would probably be about the same budget dollars as EPD.
I think we would all agree with that.
Chief, can you handle the fire? Can you?
I would love to say I could handle it. I absolutely cannot.
We work really great with EPD.
We do.
The, the gym and the fire station is used by EPD personnel. We love having them up there all the time. It's great.
Any questions from the board?
For the past 30 years or so, and probably longer than that, you've always had your, your banquet, I understand. We understand that you're not having it. So is that financially connected in any way?
It's absolutely financially connected.
And I think I brought a question to one of you. You may not have got so exactly using this year, the past couple of years, what did that actually cost you to put that on? Or did you not?
Around 20, 21,000.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
It's, I mean, there's 800 people having dinner, so.
I understand.
So what we're looking to do is, is in fall, is just have like a, if I bring a pot thing to the firehouse and then we, we allow, we still honor the members, but we, we just don't think it's fiscally responsible to, to have a big gala, if you will, when we're in the position we're in.
Correct.
We're trying to use all our resources to fund operational.
Our board froze the budgets. We felt we were in a position that we couldn't honestly, and our, our banquet was to, for dedicated to our volunteers, to honor them. And we postponed that this year because we didn't feel that we could use that money when we're, when we need it for other things such as this. We didn't feel adequate to have a banquet for our members. It's not what it's perceived to be, but it would be what the general community would think about. Oh, they're having a party and they're asking for money. Okay? I, I was tough. We took a beating when we canceled our banquet.
I can imagine.
That was receptive.
So what other conceivable ways might you have or thought of that you may do some fundraising?
Well, so fundraising is, is a tough thing in today's environment.
True.
Especially, we had, at a board meeting, somebody made a comment that we need to maybe have a sub sale or something like that. We have a $6 million budget. Selling subs is really insignificant. So we're way beyond the, the self-driven funding that we were doing in the 60s and 70s and 80s. We're providing more service to more people and it's just not fiscally possible to generate those funds. The other part of it is, as our volunteer population decreases, which it, which it does every year, we can't, we can't staff those fundraising events. So if that person only has 20 hours a week to volunteer, I want him on that ambulance. I don't want him handing out cookies for it. And so it, it really creates a challenge in that regard. And, and this is not unique to Elton. It's not unique to Cecil County. This is happening all over the United States. You'll see a thing in your packet from a study done in Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania has 10% of the volunteer population in the fire service that it had in 1970. Yet the call line has tripled. And so now every little burrow in Pennsylvania is having to hire people. And so you'll have, you know, a Little Crossroads Fire Department with, you know, four or five paid people because there are no volunteers anymore. It's very difficult for us to recruit and retain volunteers simultaneous to, our members are aging out. People that had been responding, I got a, I got a nice certificate from the governor for 50 years of service. Well, I don't have too many years left. And who's going to take my spot?
So the only people coming up now are paid people? Is that what you're talking about?
No, we're bringing in volunteers. It's, and we've, we've tried to add things to theirs, a cadet program. So the outreach, the recruitment, recruitment, retention is to go to the middle school to, to show them a way and means to have the cadet program transition over to the high school to where you can go to school of technology and take fire science. So then they can get into a career in that. So we're trying to go that, because I mean, realistically, we're in competition with cosmetology and, and plumb. We need, we need HVAC to, to recruit these young folks. And, and we've had some success. However, it's no, we can't keep up with the demand. We need to just go on that.
The magic number today for the, the calls that we have, the services that we provide, is 23 people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That 23 people could be any combination of three volunteers and 20 paid people or 20 volunteers and three paid people, whatever. You need 23 human beings to provide the service at the level that we need to provide it at.
And that's every hour?
Every hour of every day. And even with that, well, when we had, the day that you came to the fire station, we had a moment in time, the day before, we had seven calls at the same time. We had six ambulance calls and a fire all at once. We only have five ambulances. So even if they, even if they were 100% staffed, we would have still run out and had to get help from New York or Rising Sun or Chesapeake City or Northeast. And, and thank goodness, we do get help from those communities and, and we get it in an inverse proportion. So those communities are helping us more than we're helping them by a big margin. And what happened in 2000, New York came to us and said, we're not coming anymore. Because your call line that we're covering for you is making us go tilt. And we're going to have to hire more people and they're going to end up in Maryland. And we're not going to do that. And so that's when we first started hiring people, was in 2001. And that was directly related to New York saying, you're hurting, you're hurting us. And the same thing is happening. We've got to be very careful in what we do to the other communities, you know, the Northeast and the Rising Suns and Chesapeake Cities, because we can force anybody to tilt if we don't provide our services ourselves.
You know, we were at a dinner with George Pachel, you and I think Rob Maschiano, and he was saying at Perryville with the addition of the Wolf Lodge, he was saying that their emergency personnel is just out of the, out of the hat with so many calls down there. And so the same thing, I guess, would be as we add additional people in Southfield, it's going to be more numbers.
Southfield has been representing 200 calls a year for us. Not counting the transient population that, who knows with that number.
That's true.
So about 10% of our population calls for ambulance every year.
10% of our population. Wow.
Yeah, so 1 in 10 is going to call for an ambulance this year. So you figure we have about 60,000 people in our district and we can run about 6,000 calls.
And listen, we're an older community and it's.
And it's getting worse.
Yeah, it was getting older.
Last year, we ran a combination between EMS, over 6,000 calls, motor vehicle accidents, and far as about 7,500 calls last year.
8,500, yeah.
So we anticipate more this year. If you notice this, I have nothing else to do with my time. I'm old, I read. The news journal, if you just realize, was since the first year of St. Francis Hospital used to run all the emergency ambulance service through the city of Wilmington. They can't do it anymore. They said they couldn't afford to do it. They're forcing the city of Wilmington to take over the ambulance service again. They're, they're going to run about a quarter of the calls that we run at a $4 million budget. So, yeah.
We're, we're the best deal.
Any additional questions? Staff, any questions?
I think that the Singlerly Fire Company is an outstanding organization. And they've done so much, already so much to welcome their community in terms of social and economic development.
Thank you, Sam.
So then we do, so now what happens?
Well, listen.
What's next?
Well, listen, sit back there and we're going to discuss a little bit without you asking any more questions. We'll, we'll ask a few here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now, listen, we just had a, well, first of all, Lou, does the tax rate have to be determined tonight? Or what's our date, date that we have for the tax rate?
You're relating to the Causio tax rate?
That's correct. How many days do we have?
Well, you're having a hearing on the 21st and we have to give a notice. You won't have time if you wait to the next meeting. Put out a notice and meet the, the Causio tax rate rule, unless you don't raise your taxes. You don't raise taxes, I'm going to doubt they are for anything. But if you raise your taxes beyond 6356, we have to have, have notice out to the public. So I don't know how long you want to postpone it, but you get to a point where you won't be able to raise taxes because you won't be able to meet that, you know, criteria of law.
Well, listen, to, to give the Singlerly Fire Company its due and to make it the, the right thing to do, it needs to be a charter change. We have to put this so it would be in perpetuity for whoever's sitting up here on the board. Give me the process on a charter change.
Well, I would introduce a resolution with, with that change and that allocation to the fire company and the board would vote on it. Well, I would introduce a resolution, uh, with the, with that change, uh, and that allocation of the fire company and then the board would vote on it. And then there's a, have a public hearing and then after, I think it's fifty days, uh, then it becomes effective. It'll be after the beginning of the fiscal year.
So the, the question.
The money that theoretically would be raised, you have, you don't have a source of revenue for it, uh, if you don't have the tax, uh, uh, tax revenue.
Uh, the, the other question is, is does the board feel, um, would that be something you would consider to do that resol, the change in the charter? Or do you think the change in the charter should be voted on at the, uh, May election? Next year?
Personally, myself, you know, the charter is actually what came about, what, three hundred years ago to say to the town, this is how you are to govern the town and this is what needs to be done. And looking when the fire department first developed, and I've been there many years to see how the change come and what they need there, I think it actually needs new language. And not only now, but as you said, if the board had changes, it's already there. And it would be unfortunate if you didn't change because they'd be back coming again, asthma or something, in my opinion.
So I think it's a, a two-pronged deal here, we got to do a charter change and.
And agree on what we're going to change it to.
Right. Okay, that's correct. How you feeling over in the side, this side of the room?
Like a rat trap.
Uh-huh. Uh, how many utility bills do we send out a month? Do we have any idea on that or how many per quarter?
I don't know.
Yeah, so, uh, one of the other thoughts, uh, that we talked about prior was to put a, uh, right on the utility bill, let's say it was thirty dollars per household per quarter, any times that by, I don't know, I think there's a, my, my thought was, I thought there was like four, twelve thousand, sixteen thousand bills that we go out a year. And if you put X amount of dollars and it was, uh, basically earmarked directly for Singly Fire Company, then, then there wouldn't be a need to, uh, that, that would be a way that we could generate the revenue right on the, uh, utility bill and then they would pay quarterly into that. Now, everyone screams at our utility bills now because of the price of, uh, the water and the wastewater and the trash. I'm not sure if we could, we could add another item on the utility bill. But what that, that, what that would do is it would have the, uh, resident of that house is the one that would be paying for the service to the Singly Fire Company rather than maybe, uh, I'm going to say the landlord paying in their taxes.
Utility bills are sent to the property owner.
Yeah. But they hand them right to the tenant.
Or whatever, but.
Still, the, the property.
Or they pay it and then, then, then it gets passed down to the renter.
Uh-huh. So that's, that, that, that's always an option too, I don't know if that's a good option or not. Uh, we could also, um, you know, the savings in the IS, is it ISO? Is that, the IO, ISO savings really affects the commercial properties of the town, not necessarily the homeowners. We could look at increasing the business personal tax, but the business personal tax is about seventy five hundred dollars per penny and we have to write, we almost have to triple the business personal tax to make it up for that million dollars, to make that into play. But maybe there's a combination vote, maybe there's a percentage of business personal we can do as well as, uh, a tax increase for Singly Fire Company. I think there could be a juggle there.
There could be, there, there could also be, because growth impacts this, we could also oppose an impact fee.
We can.
That is earmarked for, um, this fund.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to, you know, pay for the whole thing, but it could certainly help. So you have development coming in, the developers need to address this by paying for the impact that it has on the community.
The, just to add to that is if the impact fee would only be applied to new development, probably wouldn't generate enough revenue to, to meet the needs of the fire company.
Well, not all.
Charter change affects everyone in the community, if you get it, so.
That's true, it didn't kind of, yeah, that could change too, if billing were stopped or that could also be negative.
Well, I would say this, let's, um, I know Louis needs an answer on the tax rate, but I don't think any of us, uh, want to make a, uh, off the cuff, uh, decision. Tyler, can you bounce some numbers, maybe give us some ideas?
Yeah.
I think that would be great for us. And I'm going to open up the floor right now for any public comment, uh, either anything for the good of the town or for the good of the Singly Fire Company, if anyone has anything to say. All right, I'm going to ask anyone on the Zoom meeting, if anyone has any comments, uh, uh, about, uh, what they've heard tonight or anything for the good of the town of Elton, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Seeing none? I guess we will adjourn this meeting.